Oh, my gavel broke.[4.13][4.13](Laughter). Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Treasure Island Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for August 6, 2024. Thank you all for being here, and we'll call our meeting to order if we can, we'll get started. If you can join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the free republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Toth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dr.
Here.
Commissioner Manning.
Here.
Commissioner Arden and Dickey. I'm sorry.
It's not the first time.
And Mayor Payne.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is our approval of the regular and workshop agendas. Do we have any changes that we need to be made for our agenda this evening?
I didn't notice that there were any minutes attached to the minutes.
I believe that was fixed before the meeting.
Yeah, I updated them, yes. They've been generated and published.
Might just need to refresh here.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move forward. Next is Proclamations, Recognitions, and Certificates of Appreciation. And the first one this evening, we have a proclamation for Mel and Betty Sembler Day. And this is a special one for me. I grew up, and so did my dad, next door to Mel and Betty Sembler and their kids, right on Paradise Island. They were longtime residents of Treasure Island, raised their family here, and some great, great community members that have given a lot back to the community. So they both have recently passed away, so we wanted to honor them with a proclamation. So I will go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas Melvin Floyd Sembler was born on May 10, 1930, and Betty Schlesinger was born on August 8, 1931, and they were married on May 17, 1953. And whereas Mel and Betty Sembler resided in Treasure Island for 40 years, where they raised their three sons, Steve, Brent, and Greg. And whereas Mel Sembler founded the Sembler Company in 1962, a shopping center development and management firm that has significantly contributed to the retail landscape across Florida and the southeastern United States. And whereas Mel Sembler had a distinguished diplomatic career, serving as ambassador to Australia and Nauru from 1989 to 1993 under President George H.W. Bush, and as ambassador to Italy from 2001 to 2005 under President George W. Bush. And whereas Mel and Betty Sembler founded the Drug-Free America Foundation in 1976, a drug prevention and policy organization committed to developing strategies and educational programs that prevent drug use and promote sustained recovery. And whereas Mel and Betty were both passionate about philanthropy and made significant contributions of time and resources to numerous charitable organizations. And whereas the Drug Enforcement Administration made Betty Sembler an honorary agent in recognition of her inspiring and dedicated leadership in the fight against illegal drugs. And whereas Mel Sembler was a prolific fundraiser who served as Finance Chairman for the Republican National Committee from 1997 to 2000, and as Florida's National Committeeman to the Republican National Committee from 1994 to 2000. And whereas in 2009, Betty Sembler was inducted into the Florida Women's Hall of Fame and was awarded the Tree of Life Award by the Jewish National Fund for her unwavering commitment to the community. And whereas Mel Sembler served as the spokesperson for the shopping center industry as president of the International Council of Shopping Centers from 1986 to 1987, and contributed 25 years of service to the council. And whereas both Mel and Betty served on numerous boards and committees, including the Florida Governor's Drug-Free Task Force, Operation PAR in Pinellas County, the Republican Jewish Coalition, the Florida Holocaust Museum, Florida Governor's Mansion Foundation, the Florida National Guard Multi-Jurisdictional Counter-Drug Training Advisory Board, the Jewish Policy Center, St. Petersburg's menorah manor, the University of Florida Brain Addiction Research Advisory Council, and the Florida Council of 100. And whereas Mel and Betty Sembler were extraordinary individuals who lived lives of service demonstrating unwavering dedication to their family, faith, community, and country. Now therefore, I, Tyler Payne, Mayor of the City of Treasure Island, Florida, do hereby proclaim August 8, 2024, as Mel and Betty Sembler Day in Treasure Island.[323.94][323.94](Applause). We do have several members of the Sembler family here this evening, and also the executive director of their nonprofit, the Drug-Free America Foundation. So we just want to say thank you all for being here, and thank you for your, your family members' just continued commitment to our, to our community. They have left quite a legacy, and it's our honor to, to honor them here today. So we'll invite the family up, we'll take a picture along with Amy. If you guys want to come forward, we'll come around the podium and present the proclamation.
(Inaudible).
Don't I say it, basketball?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness. Get out of that way.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Very touching.
Very impressive family, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Very nice.
I know.[417.12][417.12](Laughter). so I'll turn it over to our fire chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. It's my great honor to be here tonight to recognize some exemplary work by one of our crews in the, in the EMS realm. We run calls like this kind of thing all the time. This one was unique, though, in that it was recognized first by our county's physician medical director, who actually reached out and said, "Hey, Chief, are you aware?" And I'm like, "I'm aware, they're great, and they do good stuff all the time, but not about this particular call." So Lieutenant Rowland actually wrote the call up, and what he was most impressed with, and I'm proud of him for recognizing this, is the teamwork that was displayed on this call. So our engine company, which consisted of these four folks, Kelsey Golden, Jordan Dollstrom, Stephen Rowland, and Joe White, responded to a cardiac arrest, a cardiac arrest call. And on that call, also because we have the new computer-aided dispatch system within the county, Truck 23 from St. Pete Beach was dispatched, along with a Sunstar unit. The U2 fire units arrived at the same time, immediately went to work together like they had been training and working together their whole careers. It was seamless. Bottom line, the outcome for this patient was a full resuscitation. It was a complex resuscitation with defibrillations, multiple advanced life support drugs, cardioversion, you name it. This, this gentleman's heart threw this at this crew. And with the teamwork between St. Pete Beach, Sunstar, and our crew, they handled everything. A full neurologically intact outcome on discharge at the hospital three days after admission. So, super job, everyone. Thank you. Thank you for, you know, representing and doing your job so well. And I know we don't always get a chance to do these types of intense calls, but when we do, it's just so much more impressive that they're always ready. So on behalf of the medical director, I want to present commendations that he provided, and we are going to award each member our EMS exemplary performance award.[617.16][617.16](Applause).
You guys have family in the audience, so can we just shake hands?
No, it's not a picture. Can we do a picture?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you for your experience.
Hope you guys are all good when I need help.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Well done, as you just.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good.
He spread it out.
How about the official fire card?
(Laughter).
Thank you.
Everybody.
All right, next we have public comments for non-agenda items. Each person will have five minutes to provide comments, and please state your name and address when you come up to the podium. I have a couple cards. First is Mark Hoey.
Good evening, Mark Hoey, 225 104th Avenue, Number 110. Good to see you this evening, and in support of my comments, I have a handout. If it pleased you, I would ask Celine to pass that out to you.
Sure.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment and speak to the proposed Elevate TI program. I am not a sea change, sea level change denier.
Thank you.
However, I'm a skeptic of data, projections, forecasts of future used to spend taxpayers' money. I sat through the presentation by the city's consultant engineer last Tuesday. It was full of data points, projections, and forecasts. Most notable to me was the graph of the sea level rise used to support the sense of urgency that Treasure Island must immediately embark on a massive terrain modification program and bind our residents to substantial expense to comply. A closer inspection of the data used in the city's chart showed that the data was from seven to 11 years old. The NOAA data, NOAA data, shown were the most aggressive of the projections. An easy search of the internet produced the NOAA website containing their sea level rise chart data from 2017, and, to my surprise, updated data from 2022. Notably, the rate of sea level rise is slower, and the resulting sea level height by date is lower in the 2022 data. For example, their intermediate sea level rise forecast for 2050, which is 25 years from now, is 2.03 feet in the 2017 data, but only 1.28 feet in the 2022 data, nine inches lower, a reduction in their forecast of 37 percent. My question is, if the NOAA data shows a significant slowing in the rate of change after only five years, what will the data show us for the next five or 10 years? Will the rate of change continue to slow? Well, I'm no scientist nor engineer. I can't answer those questions, can you? The city is preparing to make extensive changes to the city's building codes and regulations while committing millions of taxpayers and residents' dollars to the proposed terrain modification program from now through 2100. Shouldn't the city ensure that the science being used to support approval of this program is reliable? I believe the Commissioners owe the citizens of Treasure Island to pause the Elevate TI program. The rush to approval and implementation is not necessary. The data used to support is suspect and needs to be reviewed. There is no need to panic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ray Tuning.
Ray Tuning, 11205 Third Street East, Isle of Palms. First, I want to say something positive. It seems like the only time we get a chance to really talk and rebut some of the things that you guys say is on a non-agenda item. So that's why we come up here and say the things we say. We're not trying to start a fight, we're not trying to be disrespectful. This is our opportunity to come back. But I would like to say on a positive note, my wife grew up here, and she knew the Semblers, and I know that they're a stellar group of people, and I'm glad that that recognition happened. I also want to say that the, the Fire Department and the EMS group saved my life. I had endoscopic procedure done, and the doctors did not know it at the time. They had nicked me on the inside. The next morning, when I woke up, I went in the shower, and I basically threw up blood. It looked like a crime scene in my bathroom. And they came and they rescued me, and they got me to Palms of Pasadena, and I think they put, I think it was four pints of blood, or four units of blood in me. I was that close to dying. So that was a wonderful thing that they did. So I do recognize their hard work. But I did, but what I came up here for is that I want to say at the end of the Commissioners' meeting held on July 30, 2024, at 6:03, following the Elevate TI special workshop, there was a discussion at 5150 on your video. You can go back and look. And Mayor Payne says, "It appears to me that criticism that we are receiving for the program is primarily from people who don't really believe in sea level rise." Now, I did not see that from any of the speakers, and if you're talking about me, please let me know, because I, I am not a denier. And I'm glad to see that Mark had mentioned that. And by the way, I had brought that same data up to you before when I showed you that the curves they were using were the wrong curves. And then you went on to say, "It makes sense that these would not support this plan because they don't believe it's an issue at all." We do support the plan. We're trying to save our homes. We have legitimate concerns, we have legitimate criticism, and I think you should be listening to us. I was taken aback, and some people I talked to were angry over the disrespect that was being shown to the residents. People are legitimately concerned about their homes. I hope that you guys will recognize that. It's not necessary for us to be incompative. We're just basically trying to point out that we're concerned about our homes. I believe I'm losing value in my home, fair market value, and I believe I will not be able to elevate my home because I can't afford it, and I can't go up just two feet because it is greater than the 50% value. I am in a situation, I may have to sell my home and move. I want to thank Commissioner Dickey, okay? You spoke up and said, "Not all people feel that way." We don't. We're not deniers. And I think you really should take a, a moment, and maybe even apologize to the people. I hope you didn't mean to tell everybody that had something to say was a denier. I also want to say, when people speak, don't confuse their concerns, whether they think, whether you think they're legitimate or not, with criticism. They have concerns. Listen to them. They're expressing their view, which you should respect. When I spoke about the living shoreline, those were legitimate concerns. Height, maintenance, the bowl effect, the golf, which I don't stand, I don't, I don't support the golf. I am critical of that decision if we were to go forward and do something with that valuable land that doesn't benefit all the people in Treasure Island. But why would you elevate the burn to 6.5 feet while advocating 7.6 feet in the terrain modification? Why wouldn't you follow your own rules and your own science? Creating a bowl would just destroy such a project as such as the golf that we will spend millions of dollars doing. I also want to remind you that you stated that there would be another workshop on the terrain modification plan. I would like to suggest a workshop slash forum, perhaps like you did with the budget, which I thought went very well, and maybe let residents ask questions to the staff and the two engineers. This is a very important issue, and it affects everybody's homes, including yours. The people that live here, all the community members, and yours. And you are the ones that are supposed to be speaking up for the individual districts that you, that you represent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move into Commissioner Reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Toth.
All righty. Well, good evening, and thank you for attending in person and streaming online, and thank you to the Semblers, and especially thank you to our first responders crew that we honored. Personal note, they were also the ones that came out for my mother when we had a stroke alert on her. So the professionalism that our team has is extremely exemplary, and thank you. I'd also like to welcome our new city manager and congratulate him on picking a wonderful week to start.[1315.19][1315.19](Laughter). And also, I'd like to thank our first responders for their service during Tropical Storm Debbie that stayed well offshore. And would also like to request that we do publish how much, how many houses were affected by storm surge. Thank you. And then I'd also like to thank Jason for getting the word out on social media, and to our city staff for clearing up ahead of time and helping pile up the stuff for Holloway later. We were very fortunate the storm stayed offshore. I couldn't imagine the damage if it hooked right like Charlie did and came into our beach community. That said, please just take some time and review the city's website about preparing and becoming storm-ready, because it could happen and probably will again, as they're predicting this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dr.
You know, they say that timing is everything, and Chuck, your timing was perfect. And I think that, and I mean that jokingly, and I mean in a serious way. We were fortunate enough today at the Rotary Club to have our fire chief and Assistant City Manager talk about hurricanes, but very specifically what happened this past weekend. And I'll tell you what, we fared very well. I mean, one, if one person gets, gets hit, it's a shame, it really is, and we can always work to do better, but, you know, we didn't have a lot of folks that didn't follow the, the rules and follow what was being said. And Chief made a great point today, you know, saying that people in Treasure Island are beginning to hear it. They, they, they're beginning to hear it. We've said it enough, they're beginning to hear it. And we really appreciate your leadership through this weekend, as well as Chief Barkley and Chief Bars and all the Public Works folks, and everybody that came together to make things happen. And I'm amazed. I look out the window, and with the storm that we had, the wind, the water, everything else, we are already on our way back to being normal again. And, and everything over the next couple of days will have everything looking great. And I had the opportunity a couple days ago to, to go down into the Isle of Palms, and, and we know we have some areas that do flood in the Isle of Palms, but everybody, neighbors were out there talking to each other. I even stopped and then talked to a couple of neighbors. We came through it very, very safely, and I appreciate everything that everybody has done, the neighborhoods, all of our departments, and, and hopefully, this was number four out of, I think, projected of 23, but let's hope that everything does stay away, and that we're all safe, and we're all listening, and we're all taking the, the, the direction from the city and, and moving forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Manning.
Well, I will ditto the welcome, Chuck. And I would ask, are we planning some type of a little tea party for Gary for his departure, if I may ask?
We're working that currently, just trying to take a look at some dates and his availability.
Okay. Yeah, before he blows town? Yeah. Okay, thank you. I would also like to commend and thank staff for the exemplary work that they performed over these past four days. I, I'm repeating, but it was well done, so that's all I can, can say, and thank you. One other thing I did want to add is, a while back, if you recall, we had a discussion about plantings along Paradise Boulevard, and that some of the palm trees were going to have to go, and that we were going to find some other vegetation to take, take their place, also fill in. And the reason for the holdback or the postponement of that was because we were in a drought. Well, folks, we're out of the drought. I think we can all deal. So Chuck, if you would, please take a look at moving forward with the Paradise Boulevard, would appreciate it. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Dickey.
I'll give a little bit more detail on this past weekend's tropical storm as it, as it came past us, as far as how it affected Sunset Beach. It did much less damage than I think anybody was expecting. The streets did flood, water did come over seawalls, both on the intercoastal side and on the, on the Gulf side. But it receded pretty quickly, within a few hours of the tides coming down, the, all the streets had pretty much drained pretty quickly. So big difference in some of the pictures I saw on television in Sarasota and some of the others that had three, four feet of water, so I was really good about, happy about that. I also want to reiterate some of the other things that the Commissioners have said too about the, the updates that we gave, we, the city, gave our residents about the, the storm updates. I thought those were very helpful. You can always go online and see updates, you know, that are more generic about the whole, you know, Tampa Bay region and the whole area, but you, the only place you can get Treasure Island-specific information is on our website, and I thought, I thought our, Jason and his team did an excellent job of keeping us informed of what was, what was in front of us on that, so thank you very much for that. I understand four houses on Sunset Beach did receive some water damage. I don't know the extent of that damage. The beach is a different story, though. The beach took a beating on Sunset Beach. I was also looking out here, and I can't imagine, well, I could imagine, because I, I found a picture earlier this afternoon of Sunset Beach from 1992, and it looked like the beach is out here. There was a quarter mile of beach. There is literally room for one set, one family today, when I went over to Sunset Chateau, to sit between, and it wasn't even high tide, to sit down and to be out of the water and to be on the beach. So there is, the Sunset Chateau has a seawall, and prior to the storm, it was about a foot and a half drop-off from the seawall down to the sand. It's about a four-foot drop now, so we lost about three to four feet of beach on Sunset Beach this past, this past weekend, so it did take a pounding. And my big concern, and the reason I bring that up, is that, you know, when the residents of Sunset Beach ask me, "When, when are we going to get the beach renourished?", the most difficult thing I have found in my job up to this point is to be able to say, "I don't know." There's nothing on the Army Corps of Engineers' schedule that gives us any kind of indication when, when the beach is going to be renourished, and if you look at Sunset Chateau and the properties on either side of it, as well as some of the others, there's not, there's no more room for air. There's no more margin for error. I think we're, if, if we don't do something, we will see homes falling into the sea with, if we have a, a serious storm head our way, because this was mild in comparison to what, what others, other areas have seen. So that's all I have. So that's all I have.
Thank you. I don't really have much else to add. Did you have something else?
Yeah, I had one more. I forgot to mention that I have a rain gauge at our house and recorded over Saturday and Sunday, we received 21 inches of rainfall. 21 inches. That equates to about, well, a foot, one cubic foot of water is seven and a half gallons. And so if you just take 21 inches, just shy of two feet, so that's almost 15 gallons of water for every square foot of ground. So I'll just bring that back around and say thanks to staff and thanks to trip for keeping us afloat, I guess is the best way to put it. That's a lot of water to, to have handled. Thanks, Mayor.
Absolutely. Yeah, I was just saying I don't have much to add. Thank you all for kind of commending our, our staff. I ditto everything that the commissioners have said, and thank you all for keeping us prepared and keeping us informed. It was a really great experience. I did want to piggyback on Commissioner Dickey's comments about beach nourishment. I, I agree, I went out there yesterday as well and took a look, and a lot of the dune restoration that was done last year has definitely been washed away. There's still big parts of it that are intact, but there's, you know, before that, we had a lot of ledges on the, on the beachfront, and those are starting to come back where the water has washed away at the, at the new dunes. And just so everyone remembers that, dune restoration was not a beach nourishment. That was an emergency project because our dunes were completely washed over and washed away in the last, the two storms that we had last year. So that was an emergency project from the county, nothing to do with the Army Corps. And it really is kind of bottlenecked at the Army Corps at this point. And I, I don't know what else we can do. We have been kicking and screaming. Our, our state representatives have been helping us. Our U.S. representatives in DC have been sounding the alarm bells for us, and it just doesn't seem to be moving anywhere. I did mention it to, I sent some pictures to State Representative Linda Chaney, and she said that she did have a conversation with Barry Burton, the county administrator, recently, and he felt as though they were making some progress with the Army Corps. And I know we are trying to work with state lands on establishing our ECL on the southern part of the island, which is the, the thing that's really, they're claiming is holding it up right now, that we need to establish that before they can determine what properties need to have easements written or assigned. So we really need to push back about, on that whole policy of the Army Corps, that they even require easements. But in the meantime, we are working towards complying with that in the hopes that if we do get a list of homes that need to have easement signed, that we may be able to get the community to really come together and get 100% of those signed, so that we can move forward with the, the nourishment. But I mean, all the northern beach communities I know have been, they've been fighting that for a long time. They were, none of them, or maybe one community was able to get 100% of their easement signed, and that's the requirement that the Army Corps is citing as their policy. So there's some work being done to try to advocate for them to change that policy, but it doesn't seem promising. So that's why the county is still moving forward with trying to comply with the policy. And I know they're also trying to create some plans for just having the county do the nourishment on their own and engineering that. So it can't come soon enough. I, I'm right there with you. That is probably one of the most frustrating parts for me, as well as not being able to give people more hope and seeing it is believing it. So I think that's part of the problem, is that these people in DC that are just making these policies have, have not seen it firsthand because it is in, it is certainly in dire straits. So anything that our residents can do to spread that word to your elected officials at a higher level than us, that can only help to put the pressure on the Army Corps engineers because that's what is needed. They need to change their policy. That is it for my report. All right, we'll move into city attorney and city manager reports.
I have nothing to report this evening.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor Payne and Commissioners, if I could, I'd like to kind of expand a little bit on your comments having to do with the Tropical Storm Hurricane Debbie. There's a lot of moving parts that go into pre, post, and during storm. And what I'd like to do is just go, go over some of the items that the different departments had done and had accomplished before, during, and after the storm, just to give the community some highlights on some of the things that go on. Now, I won't be able to cover everything and give everything justice, but there's some here that are just pretty amazing that happened because it's a well-oiled machine, you know. Commissioner Dr., when you said, Chuck, you know, it's my, your leadership, you know, when you walk into a well-oiled machine and something that already works real well, you know, the, the leadership is there, but it's not needed. But thank you for recognizing on how well the staff does things. You know, in our community development department, they conducted job site visits on Friday and Saturday to talk to contractors and tell them how to secure their sites in advance of the storm. Then after the storm, on Monday afternoon, after the second high tide, they conducted residential damage assessment. There was four flooded structures in Sunset Beach and two with wind damage over in the Isle of Palms. Public Works secured city facilities and the Baskiel Bridge prior to the storm. They took the city vehicles and the equipment and they mobilized it and moved it out to the Pasadena Community Church. They product, or excuse me, conducted pre, during, and post-storm clearings of all the stormwater infrastructure. And kudos to our stormwater and wastewater folks because they were continuously on-site before, during, and after the storm, and they were monitoring the lift stations and the master pump stations, and they were managing those to make sure that they were operating effectively. Over in Fire and EMS, we activated our Level 1 municipal EOC on early Sunday. They led the efforts with multiple coordination calls with the county and city staff before, during, and after the storm. Two additional staff were on duty with a high-water response vehicle. They responded to 30 emergency calls and dozens of non-emergency calls for information and service. Currently, we're coordinating with the cities of Gulfport and Madera Beach to staff our reserve pumper for possible deployment statewide if needed. Over in our police department, we have pre-storm increased neighborhood patrols, business patrols, to be highly visible in case people had questions or need a guidance. They reported all observable damage from flooded roadways, debris in roadways, down trees, multiple down signs, and other areas and problems throughout the city. Park and Rick, they moved the buses and the departmental trucks over to the Pasadena Community Church. They emptied the trash on the Central Beach Trail and at all the beach facilities and parks. They also secured all the park facilities and the equipment. And they contacted all the beach concessionaires and instructed them how to and helped them secure their equipment. And as was mentioned, our PIO, you know, our PIO function got the word out, and it was probably the best avenue of communication that I've ever seen operate. You know, it kept the residents and tourists informed over multiple sites, you know, our webpages, our social media, multiple social media pages, you know, before, during, and after the storm. We also kept the local media updated and answered their questions as they came in and also participated in regional PIO calls with the county. We did receive late word today on something that you had mentioned, that the Army Corps of Engineer is going to be here tomorrow. They're going to start doing their beach assessment surveying on Thursday. So as we get more information from that, we'll make sure the commission and the community is apprised on what they find. So we will keep everybody in the loop on all of that. If I could, breaking from there, from the storm piece, I would just like to offer my thanks, and I'm sure I could speak for the commission, to say their thanks also to Gary Brumbach. You know, Gary is a selfless servant, you know, someone who came in here, leading a well-oiled machine and has done phenomenal work. You know, he's a great leader and a good person, and he truly cares about this community, or else he wouldn't have stepped in on an interim basis. And, you know, he is a great mentor. He kind of took me under his wing this week, and he's kind of just been filling my head with all the information, the background, and just inundating me with all the information he can. And it's great for a first person coming in here in their first week, especially during a storm. You know, so I would just like to say publicly, thank you to Gary and to Jennifer for allowing him to come in here and to do this. That's all, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next we have approval of the minutes. We have one set of minutes on the agenda for the regular meeting and workshop on March 26, 2024. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments or corrections? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Commissioner Minin.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. We have two items on consent, the first being renewing two agreements with Waste Pro for Single Family Recycling and Downtown Compressor Services, and the second being approve Resolution 2024-07, update of signature authority. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion on the consent agenda? Do we have any public comment on the consent agenda? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Commissioner Minin.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. All right, moving into items of business. First up is item number one, first reading of ordinance 2024-10, vacating approximately 1,022 square feet of Sunshine Lane, a public right-of-way located between 127th Avenue and John's Pass, and for a utility easement to be retained over the same area. I'll turn it over to Jen to read the ordinance title, please.
Ordinance 2024-10, an ordinance of the City of Treasure Island, Florida, vacating approximately 1,022 square feet or .0235 acres of Sunshine Lane, a public right-of-way located between 127th and John's Pass, and for a utility easement to be retained over the same area, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
All right, and do we have a staff report?
All right, now, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. All right, so as Jen said, this is the first reading of ordinance 2024-10. Just to give you a better idea of where this is located, this is the northern section of Sunshine Lane between 127th Avenue and John's Pass. And it's a sketch, it's more detailed, gives you more in-depth of like dimensions and everything of the area that they're requesting to vacate. And so, before I get into this slide, the City of Treasure Island, we don't actually have a procedure in place right now at the moment of how a right-of-way is vacated. So we base this one off of how historically we've done these in the past. The last one, I believe, was 2015. So we pulled a lot of the information of how that was done and just applied it to this vacation as well. Okay, so some of the things the city commission should consider whenever they're reviewing these vacations of right-of-way, is there a necessity for this right-of-way? Is there a foreseeable necessity for this right-of-way? And also, is there a right to a convenient access of adjoining property owners that could be affected by this vacation of the right-of-way? So the applicant reached out to, this is a list of all the utility companies for letters of no objection. Only three of them came back with requesting easements. So of course, City of Treasure Island was one, we had Pinellas County, and then Duke So these are some of the findings of fact. All the property adjacent to this right-of-way is owned by the same property owner, JP Beach Holdings LLC. The right-of-way, it's not a through street, it's a single inlet outlet, it's a dead-end street. The pedestrian access is not going to be impacted as there's no sidewalks within the area. And also, there is no conflict with the city's comprehensive plan, provided that easements for the utilities, which are shown in Exhibit B, are provided at the cost, or any cost of relocation utilities, and the needed easements are borne entirely by the applicant. Staff's recommendation, so staff recommended approval of this vacation of the right-of-way. On June 27, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Board recommended approval of the vacation of the 1,022 square feet, .0235 square acres of Sunshine Lane, subject to the conditions stated in Section 3 of the ordinance. And of course, staff is available for questions.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions for the staff?
I, I have a few questions.
Okay.
I'm new at this, so forgive me if some of these questions are, are coming because of my, my lack of understanding of this. But, but the biggest question I have is, why are we giving this away? It's, I know it's a small piece of property, but it's 1,022 square feet, and I Googled how much an empty lot, non-waterfront, would go for, and the cheapest one I saw was in downtown St. Pete for $68 per square foot. So that's about a $70,000 worth of, worth of property that we're just giving to somebody? Is that what we're asking?
So this right-of-way was dedicated by Platte and is not actually owned by the city. It is dedicated to the public for access and typical right-of-way actions like utilities and roads.
So nobody owns this property right now?
It, so it's, it's dedicated property, so actually the public owns it and you're entrusted with it. So it is a public right-of-way, they use it for access to and from.
So we're giving this property to, to a developer, or is the person that owns all the property around that, we're just giving it to them?
So yes, if vacated, it, it goes back to the abutting property owners.
I assume this is normal practice or something? It just seemed out of the ordinary that we would be.
So how, just kind of separate and apart from this project, just kind of like from a historical overview, sometimes what you'll do is you'll have somebody that comes in and plats the community, and they anticipate that it's going to be developed in a particular way, and they'll put in certain roadways. And those roadways may come about or may not. Or they may come about and then you're no longer using them because those lots get changed or they get combined in different ways. And so as a government, you have the option, if you, if it's not necessary, you know, either not being used or not foreseeable to be used in the future, to determine that you no longer need this right-of-way and you can vacate it.
Can I interject on a question? I'm piggybacking off of that. So on this map that you have here, would I be correct that potentially, I believe the property currently is one property that wraps all the way around that? So where the 30, the 6, 5, 6, 7, and the area above that, that's all one piece of property. But according to them, that map, would that indicate that those two slivers that where the 5 is and then the 6 and the 7, was that at one point in time a separate piece of property? And would that be why that?
Yes, when it was platted, those were.
Or the right-of-way goes in there because it might have been two separate properties that needed to have access at one point in time?
That is exactly correct. The Platte would have provided access to lots 5, 6, and 7, and Lot 30, which I believe is from a different original Platte, but the same idea.
So now that those have all kind of been combined over time, there's not really a need for the right-of-way?
Can I ask a question? Underneath the, by the 30 and the 33, there's that no man's land little square? What's that property?
So that is further, just to the left of the 30? Is that?
Correct.
What we're referring to? So that is the remaining part of Sunshine Lane, that's also Sunshine Lane. But because that is abutting a different property, the hotel to the south, it is remaining as a right-of-way. That's how they access that hotel, it's part of the access.
Okay, any other questions?
Does the city benefit in any way by, by vacating this property? Or the city or its residents? I'm not sure who to address that question to. Is there any benefit to the residents or the cities by, by doing this?
Typically, cities vacate right-of-way when it's not needed. And that's really the determination if it has a present or future need.
Okay, so will, would it? So will, would it possibly, in, I'm looking for a benefit here, okay? Would, would it increase the value of that property, therefore, the property taxes on that property would go up?
Yes, I would think that'd be a good assumption.
So that is one benefit the city might derive from. Okay. I was looking for something.
And Commissioner, if I could, and there's also the possibility with that, and, you know, the, it is owned by one property owner. So that property owner, after acquiring that, acquiring this piece, if it, if it's approved, you know, could propose a development, which would increase the property value there.
And maybe worth noting is the fact that that property owner simultaneously with this vacation petition also did an application for a site plan approval, and that did go through planning and zoning, that doesn't come before the commission, and it was approved. So the, the site plan, though, is conditioned upon whether or not this vacation is, is granted.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, do we have any public comment? You can come to the podium, please. You can hide behind the podium. You look fine.
Karen Barnett, 201-104th Avenue. I just wondered, is there anything, I understand it's a lane at this point, are there any utilities involved underneath that would have to be moved? If so, do they take on that responsibility? I noticed it said they take on responsibilities, but I didn't know if there's anything that currently exists that would be the responsibility they would take on.
Yes, there are currently three utility companies that have identified utilities in the right-of-way. That was the City of.
Treasure Island.
Treasure Island, Duke Energy, and Pinellas County Water. And so they are returning to the city as a condition of this, an easement over that, so the utilities can remain and be serviced.
Okay, so they kind of, like in New Zealand, you own the property on top and the government owns the property underneath, essentially.
Similar.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance 2024-10 and schedule its second and final public hearing on August 20, 2024.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and approved. Any further commission discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question, one more. I'm sorry. Does public use that accessway to get to the beach or anything from Sunshine Lane?
Currently, it's fenced off. This will become a public parking lot. That is the proposal that's been approved for a site plan. And so, yes, there will be access to the beach from here.
Afterwards.
Yes, whether vacated or, this, you can speak to the site.
Oh, I also want to say, we did add a slide in here that does show the site plan that was approved by P&amp;Z. So they are proposing a parking lot for the moment.
Any other comments or discussion? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Commissioner Manning.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. All right, next item is number two, execute extensions to the Building Department Services contracts with MT Cosley and Joe Payne, Inc., and authorize spending authority for this renewal period up to $500,000.
Good evening, Mayor Commission. And I will ask, since Catherine is sitting here, it's perfect, I was asked her to stay there. Not a lot of introduction on the finance side for this item. This is just a continuation of the contracts that we have with our two building services providers, Joe Payne Incorporated, which is our secondary, and MT Cosley, which is our primary building services department. Both of them agreed to a 3% increase for the next term, which also happens to be the final term of this agreement. So we will be evaluating whether or not to go out to bid in the next year for these services, or if we just to continue on with them. I believe it did have a renewal period in them. Again, both of them agreed to a 3% increase, which was the stipulation in the original contract, and those rates have actually been included in the FY25 proposed budget already. So we've already included that on the revenue and the expenses side. So these are already reflective in the FY25 budget, and if there are any questions about the contract themselves, Catherine is up here to answer any of those.
And I did want to note that you guys have been handed a current version of this. The one that was published in the packet actually had last year's dates in part of it. So the version on the dais actually has the 2024, 2025 years. It's reflected twice in one of the contracts and three times in the other contract, but the ones you have in front of you are the correct version. Those are the only changes that are the dates.
That was, that was a little snafu on my part. We thought this item would be coming to the commission a little bit earlier, so the, some of the updates just didn't get reflected in, in enough time. But they are, even though the current versions are not signed, the, both of these vendors signed the, the previous version of these contract extensions the same day I sent them to them, so I have no doubt that they will sign these, knowing that it's a condition upon the city executing it as well.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions for the staff?
I know the answer to this question, but for the official record, Joe Payne, Inc., that is not related to any of the commission members?
We made sure that it was. Even the mayor himself has admitted that in the past couple of years, whenever we've renewed this. I have no ties to this company.
No relation.
So, yes, it's, that's no, no nepotism involved in this one whatsoever.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Do we have any public comment? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion, please.
I move to approve the one-year renewal of Contract 20-001 with SafeBilt and JPI for Building Department and other planning-related services, and authorize the city manager to execute the Fourth Amendment to the agreement, RFP 20-001, between the city and MT Cosley, a SafeBilt company, and the Third Amendment to the agreement of RFP 20-001 with Joe Payne, Inc., JPI, and to approve the city manager's spending authority up to $500,000 for the renewal period with either contract vendor.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion or comments? I just want to say, I think this is working out very well, and I just want to rewind to when we were only using MT Cosley, or otherwise known as SafeBilt. We were having a lot of, a lot of issues with backlog and just, it didn't seem like we were able to ever get caught up in the Building Department. So I think the addition of Joe Payne has been really beneficial. I'm not sure if it is still as a result of that, but I think it's great to have that redundancy there where we have another vendor that we can utilize if we can't get what we need from, from SafeBilt. So I appreciate it. It seems like everything is going well compared to when I first started as a commissioner. I think the complaints about service time and customer service in the Building Department have significantly diminished, and I think it's largely because of this, this setup we have and our great staff that we do have in, in the department internally. So thank you all. Anything? All right, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Commissioner Manning.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes unanimously as well. All right, with that, that concludes our items of business. Do we have any other business to come before the commission? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.